All right, since Morris is working on logging in, I'll, we'll get the first bit of formalities out of the way and he'll be able to roll right into, once we get into new business. So I'm gonna bring today's R-Plan Development Special Team, Special Meeting to order on this Wednesday, August 12th. Taylor, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, we are.
All right, great. Now, we're going to have Eileen call the roll. If, whenever you're called upon, please just unmute yourself and acknowledge, appreciate it.
Ms. Beck?
Yep, here.
Ms. Antonucci?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Present.
Mr. Carstens?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
Oh, and Peter.
And Mr. Christian?
Here.
All right, thank you. Again, we'll get Morris in here once he's all set. Moving on to approval of agenda, does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Chairman.
Move acceptance, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Christian, a second by Mr. Scanlon. Does the team, if you have any changes to the agenda, state them when called upon by Eileen? Otherwise, please vote yes or no to approve the agenda. Eileen, go ahead and call the roll again.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Antonucci?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Carstens?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Christian?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Next item, approval of the minutes from our meeting way back in January 13th of this year. Can I have a motion for those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Scanlon, a second by Mr. Christian. Again, as before, if you have any changes to the minutes, please state them when called upon. Otherwise, please vote yes, no, or abstain for approving the minutes. Go ahead, Eileen.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Antonucci?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Carstens?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Christian?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Before we move on to new business, as with all the meetings, especially with this online format, it's, we get citizen comments in advance. So Taylor, would you please provide us any citizen comments?
Sure thing, Mr. Chairman. Public comments concerning agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal for this meeting. The portal closed yesterday at noon, and we received no comments. Residents were provided the option to sign up for public comment participation by phone during the meeting. The public comment period closed at noon yesterday, and we received no requests to call in for this meeting.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Moving on to new business. We are here to review and have the recommendation of pushing our plan, the R-Plan document along to the Comprehensive Plan Committee for the Towns Planning Commission. I'll just say, as far as, before we get into working through our discussion, that obviously, our group has been tasked with the principles and process, which I think we've done very well in maintaining this as a platform that has a lot of public input, a lot of visibility, even in, you know, this unique times of the last six months. But well in advance of that with all of our work, work groups. And that, you know, as a citizen and a practitioner in the town, you know, this is, is, is an important document that ties with land management ordinance and shapes, you know, town policy. It'll be important for us to, in our comments, let's make them as succinct and as molded as possible in making this a better document for the public. We, we certainly don't need to get into too much of the weeds, but if there are things that make this more efficient, if there's ways of making this more efficient, this is obviously a very thorough document as it is. That's what our, our goal is. Again, yeah, at the end of, at the end of this meeting, we will be looking to vote as far as recommending moving this forward with any potential comments onto the Comprehensive Plan Committee. I'm gonna ask Taylor to just do a brief introduction as far as for staff and the town. And then what we'll do is, we will work our way through, similar to the way we've done roll, as far as providing comment. So it'll be Jean, then Jean, then John, then Mike, Peter, and then myself. And, and what we'll do is, I think we will go through this round twice. So if somebody hears something that they either want to respond to or add to, we'll be doing that. And then after the end of that second round, we'll be making a motion and a second. Obviously, if there's particular comments, this is all being recorded, so we'll try to capture as much as possible in that motion. And so with that, Taylor, why don't you go ahead with the introduction, please?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. This is very momentous and exciting, and I'm so glad you guys get to be part of this first step in moving our plan forward towards adoption. Staff feels that our plan meets the intent and purpose as set forth by the principles and process, and that it is compliant with state requirements. Staff recommends that you send our plan forward to the Comprehensive Plan Committee of Planning Commission for consideration towards adoption. And again, we did not receive any public comments for this meeting. So that is my very brief introduction, and I look forward to listening to your discussion and answering any questions you might have along the way.
Thank you, Taylor. Jean, we're gonna start with you, since you're at the top of the list here. Once you wrapped up, you can just let us know, and obviously, I'll work for the next member. Thank you.
Great, okay. Well, thank you very much. You know, I thought I knew a lot about the town of Hilton Head Island before I joined this committee. Now, I feel like I really know a lot about the town of Hilton Head Island after reading this and being a part of this. So it's been a real wow and a real great process, for sure. I just have a couple of quick comments. Taylor, on, on Roman numeral number 18, it was like right in the very beginning, you just have one typo. I think you mean to be "not" instead of "no", and "not a competitor", one thing I saw. And then I, on page, I have a question, on page number, page number 210, where it says "the recreation element", my question is, it says in 2005, "the recreation element was added to the town's comprehensive plan to replace the 20-year 1995 recreation plan." So if it's 1995 to 2005, that's 10 years, not 20. Am I reading that right? Because you have in there a 20-year plan. That's just a catch. Then,
Thank you.
My other comment, and of course, the housing section, which is a little more my area of expertise, just a couple of comments on that. On page number 62, it talks, it talks about the housing trends there, and evaluating housing trends and vacancy rates. I think we need to try to clarify a little more what is meant by vacancy rate. That can get a little not clear, especially when it comes towards media. People think vacancy rates, they're thinking foreclosure. And that's kind of the public perception of that. So if we get a little more clarification on there, that the vacancy rates, meaning unoccupied or not, you know, not, they're, they're still there, they're just not a foreclosure, or not empty, that, that type of process. We've had that problem before in the media, that we've tried to correct, and I, I just think it's just lingo that people use in this, in the, probably in the municipality industry. And then my other recommendation in the, in this part of the housing would be to have a chart, kind of like it, where we can use it as a baseline of knowing exactly how many properties on Hilton Head are 4% and how many properties are 6%. I think that would be very advantageous to any town council or any other parts of the town committees or staff going forward. That's always been a question, how much, we all question, you know, the, I mean, it's certainly a point of concern, especially when we talk about schools and we talk about the excellence of our schools. I just think that, that it would be used in a lot of different ways to have that as part of this plan. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that was my only recommendations.
All right, thank you, Jean. Jean, you ready?
I am ready. First, I want to thank everyone for this opportunity, and also to say to Taylor, her team, and all the folks that worked very hard on this, the residents. Kudos to all of you, because this was a monumental piece that you put together, and you did an excellent job at it. So, thank you very much. I really don't have a lot of comments. The only one or two that I have, one is with the excellence. And I, I noticed that for the excellence, it fits into all of the elements except for transportation. And I, I was hoping that there might be a way to combine that, because transportation is such a huge piece for, for all of us. So reading on under "right infrastructure", when you mentioned having, you know, multi-use pathways, that's kind of unique and something special about Hilton Head. So why not make it the best? And it's just a suggestion to reach for that. And then transportation has a spot under excellence. It was just a, a thought I had. And then under "regional", I noticed there's a lot, well, there's a lot everywhere on workforce housing, which is really, really critical to our island. And when you comment on it, are you also considering workforce development? I didn't, unless I missed it, I didn't see anywhere where workforce development was something that the town was working on, plans to work on. So, you know, on page 172, under "goals", you have workforce housing for regional, but nothing about workforce development, which I think is hand in hand. It's just a comment that I have on that. And,
Ms. Antonucci? Actually, in "economy", on goal 6, the, that does have a, a goal that says to have a high-quality, sustainable workforce with a number of strategies and tactics that go with that. If that answers your concern and that, that meets what you're looking for.
If you're meaning building of workforce development here, or... Can you just tell me what page it's on?
Oh, sure, 134 and 135. It does talk about development of workforce housing, coordinating education institutions to meet training needs.
Oh, right, okay, so under 6.2.2, I have a note that, that, and it, that is, I guess, part of workforce development. You're right. Would that be regional, too? 6.2.2?
Yes, it could be. I think we could make a, we could draw a link there between those two.
Yeah, that was a note I had. And that's it. I think it's important to emphasize it in several places. Thank you. And great job.
Thank you, Jeanie. Moving on to John.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. John Carroll here. First of all, I just want to congratulate the town, including town staff and town residents. You know, this process started really before the, the R-visioning, and, and then through our vision, and then the community town hall-style meetings that many of us in this meeting today attended along the way, and resulted in this, in this wonderful document. I have to send kudos to Taylor Ladd for spearheading the, the authorship and penmanship of this document. I think it's great. And our number-one chapter, relentless pursuit of excellence, I think this document reflects that. So congratulations for the town, to the town in that regard. I, I only have a few quick comments. First of all, I want to say thanks for including in Chapter 2, "redefining environmental sustainability", the, the language in regards to, you know, making sure our, I'm paraphrasing here, but it was measuring the effectiveness of the town's recently enacted beach layer ordinances. I appreciate that inclusion. In regards to Chapter 3, "revitalizing and modernizing", you know, there really is, is zero criticism here, because we never, we never discussed this in, in any of our meetings, to my knowledge. But one thing that has occurred since our last meeting is the need for remote services. So one potential thing that perhaps could be included, if it's not already there, and, and Taylor, I apologize if I may have overlooked this, is, is a desire to pursue remote or online town services, municipal services. I think we're mostly already there. I mean, our business licensing services and, and many of our submissions for, you know, zoning variances, you name it, can already be submitted electronically via email. So I'm not sure that many changes need to be made. Our town may already be there. But, but perhaps just, you know, a quick, some quick, you know, discussion internally to determine how we can provide more remote services in light of current events may have some value. Moving on to Chapter 4, and I'm not sure if this is the, the appropriate chapter for this to fall under. One thing I think the town did an excellent job of is cross-referencing goals and strategies, objectives, that can, that can be placed in multiple categories depending on, you know, your, the point of view and, and the particular, you know, approach of, of the goal. So this, it may be more appropriate to, to list this in another chapter. I do recall some discussion about, about town-wide residential marketing efforts. There was some discussion about how, you know, after the initial major developers, you know, sold out and stopped marketing the developments, that, that marketing initiative really had no obligation to be picked up by any other entity. So I recall on some of our prior meetings, I had made some comments about potentially thinking about the town investing and advertising for, for, for residential home buyers, for, for folks from across the country and around the world to consider moving to Hilton Head. To me, that could only improve property values. So given that we have a transfer tax, that any investment made in there may, may prove to be, you know, budget neutral. In regards to Chapter 5, I had a note here, and, and Taylor, please feel free to correct me if I missed this. I recall there was some discussion about a really big goal to have Hilton Head island-wide broadband internet. I think that's critical for workforce development, particularly among professional services sector. And if I do, I found very valuable the, the historical and current, current data segment of the document that discussed vacancy among commercial office space. And, and for all I know, that vacant commercial office space already has access to broadband internet. But I know many places on this island do not. And I'm not sure, that could already be a goal in this document. I apologize if I missed it, but I had a note here to, to mention that. That's my last substance substantive comment. The only other thing I'd like to say is that I personally really enjoyed reviewing this, particularly the historical component. You know, I have a paralegal Linda Tumer that's two doors down from me, and I'm going through the 1950s era of our town, and, and it just mentioned that the Hudson and the Tumer family played a huge role in some of the oyster factory development and things of that nature. So I went over to Linda and asked for a history lesson. So for someone having only moved to the island about five years ago or so, this entire process has made me feel more connected to our community. And, and that speaks to the efforts of town staff, it speaks to the efforts of, on everyone on this committee, and for all the residents that invested time in, in making this project a success. So, so kudos to the town in that regard. That, that's my final comment.
Thank you, John. Mike, would you please provide us with your thoughts?
Thank you. First of all, I do want to reiterate what's been already said, but for Taylor and Ann and all those involved in the production of this draft, what a great job they did. And I know it was a lot of work, and having been involved in other projects that come out with a product like this, I realize how much work is going into it, and I do want to say that I appreciate that, and I'm sure the entire town will appreciate that when we're, when we're finished. Couple of areas of, that are concerned to me, one is a very, I consider it to be a big plus, and that's what we said about transportation. I really, in the area of pages 174 and 175, I was very gratified to see how the transportation topic was handled. And I just want to say how pleased I was with that section. The whole product is good. There's only one area where I, I have a concern. I noticed that out of all the different segments of this community, you've got accommodations and food, supplies, 5,700 jobs, retail trade, another 2,900 jobs, and the healthcare community, 2,700 jobs. And being the third-largest segment of our employment, I thought we should probably spend a little more time on the subject of healthcare. I know that we've spent 63 pages talking about parks and recreation. Healthcare comes up very few times, and what little there is on pages 83 and 87 in that area, it, it just really seemed like we kind of passed over healthcare a little bit, maybe didn't give it what, what we should, being our third-largest employer in the area in terms of jobs. For example, a few times that healthcare comes up, you look in the index back around 314, 316, I think it is in the index, healthcare comes up very few times, and really, the words, the word "healthcare" is mentioned just in a list of other things. And it really isn't, we didn't spend a lot of time on healthcare, except on pages in 83 to 87. It's mentioned, and there's some, some goals and tactics in mind. I just think that we might have kind of put a lot of emphasis on other areas of parks and recreation, being a perfect example, some 60, what did I say, 63 pages? And healthcare gets very few mentions. In fact, if you look in the index, pickleball gets more mentions than healthcare in this document. And I think that maybe we have slighted ourselves a little bit in that area. And I would like us to perhaps take a look, if maybe we could expand a little bit on that healthcare subject matter, and see if we can, I mean, with the median age on this island compared to the county and compared to the state, I think it's a, it's a major area of concern and, and a major area where we should be looking ahead in the next 20 years. So I, I raise that to staff and to the rest of my colleagues to see if we can't maybe beef up a little bit the healthcare portion of this thing. I've said before, I firmly believe, and there is a movement on the island, to try to bring a major healthcare provider onto the island, whether it's TeleMed, maybe Cleveland Clinic TeleMed or something like that, that we need to have maybe more specific goals and tactics in trying to get us positioned in the healthcare area in a, in a greater way than we are over the period of the next 20 years. And that's, that's the one question mark I had about the, I went through every page of this document. That's the one question mark that kept coming up is, you know, why are we spending 63 pages on parks and recreation? And very little mention, really, of, of healthcare compared to a pickleball, was for example. That's the only thing I have to say. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond. Also, welcome, Mr. Campbell. I'm glad you're able to join us. Mr. Scanlon, to respond to your concern about healthcare, the way it has been addressed in the comprehensive plan is really in proportion to the town's scope of work in regards to healthcare. Being the town, the way it is set up, there, there isn't much we can enforce in terms of what is in the private sector as far as healthcare goes, other than to do what we can to foster it as an economic sector for the island. So the town, there's really nothing having to do with healthcare that the town has control over other than what we do in regards to zoning and development rights. So that is why it's, but it seems like such a small proportion in regards to, for example, your example, parks and recreation. The reason why we have a huge section in parks and recreation is because that is within the town's scope of work for the island. And we actually have, in the past, had an entire element in the comp plan devoted to recreation. So that is why it's been expanded upon and reflective of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan effort, because that is, falls within the realm of our capital improvement spending and the use of town-owned property and other publicly-owned property on the island. So that, I hope that might help dispel some of your concern, and I do understand where you're coming from with that, because healthcare definitely came up a lot in conversation. There is a goal about that in the inclusive chapter, and there's discussion about that in, in the inclusive core value, generally speaking. So it, it really is more about what falls within the scope of work for the town in terms of the purpose and intent for the comprehensive plan. Like I said, there's only so much the town can do, so that's why it's, it's reflected in that regard.
I understand. I just consider it to be a, it's the third-largest employer around here, and I just think that perhaps in our role as a leader in the community, the government should be maybe encouraging more things along the lines of healthcare. Maybe have a few more goals and maybe a few more tactics that we could take. a few more goals and maybe a few more tactics that we could take as a town.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that.
All right. Thank you, Taylor. Thank you, Mike. Morris, I'm just going to let you know, I'm going down through the list of everybody. And so, Peter's up next, and then you'll be following him. And then we're going to circle back around after I go for one more list of comments. So, in regards to, if you don't, if you start hearing some other things you want to respond to, you'll get another chance to after your first bit of thoughts here. All right. So, yes, Peter, you are next up, please.
Well, obviously, Michael has not played pickleball before. Otherwise, he would very much appreciate why pickleball is mentioned so often. It seems to be the big trend, Michael. And I'm not a pickleball player either, but I've been inundated with requests for pickleball courts off the charts. So, that seems to be the greatest trend. But they'll get injured playing pickleball, Michael, and then they'll need healthcare.
Then what do you do?
To your point, you know, that is going to be a requisite. And a recent survey talked about the fact that there weren't enough doctors or medical professionals to go around on the island to treat all of us. And now with concierge services being all in the vogue, it's tough to find a doctor without paying a premium for them, and tough to see them. And it's even tougher in this environment. I appreciate all the comments of my colleagues and yet to come, and in the casually of being redundant. But Taylor, we need to pile on the accolades, because the document not only reads well, and it covers all the points that we and many, many other citizens covered during our journey. But the graphics, the way it's presented, the way it's put together, is just, it's very, very good to read, and very easy to read. And we appreciate all the work that went into it. I know Jennifer Rae probably had her hand in this, as well as many other of your colleagues. And just kudos to all of you. I'm going to stand pat on the comments that my colleagues have made. It has been a real honor to serve with you during this process, and listen to all the citizen input. And Judd, thank you for your leadership. As we go through this, this is probably, I believe, it's going to be our last meeting together. And it's hard to believe that the last time we got together was in January. But obviously, this pandemic has put a damper on most everything. Do want to reiterate something that, you know, John Carroll had indicated. He talked about internet connectivity, and just making sure that Wi-Fi, telephone, cellular service is really a priority, because we talked about attracting residents to the island, and now with folks fleeing from the cities, from the environments that are no longer attractive, for a variety of reasons, which I won't get into, but I think everybody here knows why they're leaving. But they have discovered, you know, two things. If they have a good internet connection and good cellphone service, they can work from home. And those two things are going to drive residential sales, as well as our attractive climate, and the fact that we still love our police force. So, I will leave it at that, and turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Morris, if you wouldn't provide, if you wouldn't mind, I basically preference that the comments, we're looking at any ways or any thoughts you had as far as making the document more user-friendly, if there's an item that you feel like might have overlooked, or something that you have a comment specifically on. That's kind of the goal of this, obviously, in line with, you know, our principles and process that we've been going through this whole entire time. So, go ahead.
Need to unmute yourself, Morris.
Oh, Morris, I think you're still muted. It should be the little microphone right down by your picture there, you can click on.
He may not have activated at the moment when he first signed in.
Mr. Campbell, can you call on your cellphone? You may not have a microphone on your end.
While we wait for Mr. Campbell to come back, I'll go ahead and just add in, obviously, with everyone's hard work, and with the hard work of staff in our task force, I feel like we do have an excellent document here. In my many years on the planning commission, and my additional years of just working within the town's parameters, and even being on Comprehensive Plan Committee before, when I was on Planning Commission, this document obviously is a great step up in regards to its interface, and as well as just its content. So, I'm excited to use this as a tool. And I know, you know, staff, town council, planning commission, everyone involved with the projects in the town are going to find this very effective, especially in guiding and maintaining that citizen input. And I definitely see that in looking through it, you get a taste of all the viewpoints, and you get a taste of all of the perspectives that folks have. And that's why we have so many, you know, so many interconnectedness amongst all of our pillars. And I just, you know, I've just really enjoyed this process as a whole. And it's a long time coming, when you look at the timeline saying that we started back in 2017. But it's great to see that this is going to be, you know, something effective for the town in the very short while here. I am going to, let's see, Morris is still having some issues. So, let's, since we've gone through our first round here, I'm sure the second round is going to be a little briefer, if anything. Hopefully, Morris will give him a second here. He's got his local IT support.
I'm impressed that Mr. Scanlon was brave enough to discuss pickleball. I think I've probably received more feedback, we'll put it that way, about pickleball comments than any other.
And I certainly say, to Taylor's point, you know, the Parks and Recreation was, it has a lot of information. I mean, obviously, the preface to this has a lot of information about the town in general and the trends. But the Parks and Rec in the master plan that was completed, it really, it really, yeah, obviously added quite a bit to this document. But it's all very useful, because that's certainly the element that brings a lot of folks here, either on vacation, or it enriches, you know, has the opportunity to enrich everybody's life, is our town-supported parks. So, I'm glad to see that they were able to complete the master plan, and...
I just want everyone to know that I'm not against pickleball, okay? I just, I am for healthcare, okay, put it that way.
Yeah. And I certainly, you know, I see healthcare, and I see continuing care as elements that, you know, fall within housing. It is an economic element. It is a, you know, obviously, infrastructure, very much housing, both for, you know, the folks being cared for, and the caregivers. So...
And employment. It's the third-biggest employer we've got.
Yeah. All right. Since we're having issues with Morris, again, let's circle back to Gene for a second round, and then we'll get Mr. Campbell's comments in here for sure, once he's back with us. So, Gene, if you've got anything additional or anything to respond to that you've heard already, please do so.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, first thing, as far as broadband, I can tell you that workforce is, workforce is already here. They are coming out of the woodwork to move here. So, we definitely need to focus on that. That's a good point. And then, as far as the healthcare, that seems to be a concern here, you know, I just want to share, first of all, share a happy anniversary, our 45th anniversary to the Hilton Head Regional Healthcare this week, that they are celebrating it. And I think it reasons why it's the second-largest employer, or the third-largest employer, is because, employment is because we are very fortunate to live on an island of 47,000 people, and have the quality healthcare through the hospital that we have. That is, does not, you know, we should not take that lightly when you look at the history of how that hospital came to be. And I do think there is great communication between our town of Hilton Head, and the hospital, and our healthcare workers, especially during this pandemic, during hurricane seasons, those are all, those relationships have grown. And our EMS, our local EMS and our hospitals, you know, we're fortunate on Hilton Head Island also to be a heart-safe community. And that's that relationship that the town's EMS department has made with the hospital, and has done that work to make us a heart-safe community, an accolade that we should, you know, recognize and certainly be proud of. So, I understand your concern about healthcare, but I think I also understand where Taylor is saying, any more than we talked about, when we talked about schools, there's a scope of work that the town can work within, but they are not going to be the purveyor of the healthcare system in this, in the, you know, through the town. So, I understand that. But I do think there's a great relationship between our town, our EMS especially, and our healthcare and hospital. I don't think I have any other comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Gene. Did you have anything to add, Gene?
I just want to thank John for bringing up technology, because that's, I'm a huge supporter of that. And it is definitely vital to the future of our island, especially for working remotely, as was mentioned. So, hope it's a priority. Thanks.
Mr. Carroll, you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No real comments to add. I'm happy to hear that we have such widespread support in regards to island-wide broadband internet and remote work technologies. And just want to thank the chairman and the rest of the committee, again, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Scanlon?
I'll, I just want you to know that I feel strongly about the hospital here in Hilton Head. Having donated my gallbladder to them about eight weeks ago, I have, it came through it okay, but the hospital did a great job, I might add. I'm very pleased that I was appointed to this development team. I want to thank both Alex Brown and Peter Christian for that opportunity. I want to really stress my appreciation for the work that's been done by Taylor, and the town staff, and the plan team on this particular product. It is very well put together. And I understand that my, I wanted to reiterate my compliment on the whole transportation area. I thought that was very well done, and I look forward to the next 20 years trying to achieve those various goals. And, you know, I understand that the town is not involved in healthcare specifically. I was looking for, I'm looking for leadership. I'm looking for the town to try to attract doctors, and nurses, and healthcare professionals to our community. And I was hoping that we could perhaps provide some leadership in bringing a higher state of care to the island. I do, I have nothing against Parks and Recreation or pickleball, I just wanted to reiterate that. But I spent a lot of my professional career in sports, and so I have no problem with my friends who play pickleball. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have Mr. Campbell on the phone.
Okay. Morris, why don't you...
Okay.
Yes.
I'm on the line. Let me just, let me just thank you guys again for being patient with me. And I want to share with you my comments, and that mine are very similar to everyone else's, as far as the good job that the staff has done in pulling this together. But the staff pulled it together based on information that they had obtained from us and from the community. And I think that it's a very good document, it's a very on-time document, and there's a lot of good information in it, and a lot of good ideas that are being projected or pushed forward. I know that it is quite difficult to plan for a horse when it's already out of the barn, and that's what we have been basically doing for some time, since 70% of the island is already planned for, or pre-planned for. And certainly, that sort of limits our, I guess, our view as far as landmass to plan for. But take that for what it's worth, it's still important for us to plan for the remaining 30% of the island that is not really a part of a PUD. I think it's important for us to spend a little more time and energy, though, working with the PUDs to ensure that they're planning, and that they're thinking, and that their focus is for the good of the entire island, as well as their enclave, or their community, or their immediate community, and their needs that exist within those PUDs. I like the component that talked about technology, and of course, and of course, you all know that my, one of my biggest interests is making sure that we are doing things that will encourage regional, regional review, or regional perception of what really is going to make a big difference, not only for Hilton Head, but this whole region, over the next 20 to 30 years, especially if that vote takes place in Jasper County. As far as the document is concerned, there are a couple of things that I would suggest that we, that we try to do, and that is use proactive, more words, more proactive words in the document, as far as words that will force the town, or force us as a community to get things done. You know, it's nice to say encourage, but I would like to say something different than just encourage, because encourage means that we all encourage to do things. But if we're going to commit to do things, and get things done, then we would use words that will help us to understand that we are committing, or that we are working toward getting those things done. Throughout the document, there are some good words as far as continuing. But I saw encourage too many, in too many cases, I think, on issues that we need to really work on, be it affordable housing, or workforce housing, be it preservation of the historic sites, or be it the healthcare issue that Mike talked about, we really need to do more than just encourage in those areas. And we need to take the leadership position in those areas and get things done. With housing, instead of saying encourage housing, I mean workforce housing... housing, instead of saying encourage housing, I mean workforce housing, we need to say we can do something as far as incentives, etc. We use those words instead of just casually encourages, basically, not going, force people to pay the kind of attention that I think they need to pay to it, to take on initiatives or do initiatives and do partnering, actively seek partners to do things. Those are the, those are the only things that I saw that that the document would probably be a stronger document than a document that will force those of us who are a part of implementing it to to take action on. As far as the recreation component, I like it. And of course, like Mike, I don't do pickleballs, but I do a lot of other things with younger people that I think is very important. And I always thought that two things that make communities, real communities, that is a good educational system and a good recreational system. And of course, the medical or the healthcare service is very important to our population of people. So those are my comments. And folks, I have, you know, I have enjoyed working as a part of this team and certainly with the staff, with Lad and the rest of the team. It's been quite an experience for me. Of course, you know, most of my career dealt in government. So this was just a refresher for me to take a look at what we are doing to try to make life better for all of our citizens. So thank you all so much. And again, I wish I could be on the, be on the, be on the, on the, on the, on the video part, so I could see the reaction on your faces. But I can feel it coming through the, to you, through the silence. So thank you all much.
Yes, Morris, thank you so much for your efforts and your contributions. Peter, do you have any final thoughts from today?
Just just a minor comment. You know, we've enjoyed having the bully pulpit to get the word out on a variety of issues. And I hope that the town council and the mayor continues to use their opportunities to have a bully pulpit to talk about, you know, education and healthcare and promote residential nature of our community. And Morris, to your point about, you know, workforce housing, the LMO Committee of the Planning Commission just made a recommendation to the full commission that we're going to take up at our next meeting regarding many, many sectors of the town where they'll be given bonus density
Right.
if they include workforce housing as a component of a of a residential development. So that is a very, very positive move. It has not been approved by the Planning Commission yet. It has a positive recommendation from the LMO Committee. And it goes to Planning Commission, I believe, on on August 19. And then there'll be a recommendation from the commission, and that will go to the town council. So, you know, your words are very, very strong and did not go unnoticed. And we're already reacting to them. And Mr. Chairman, those are my my comments.
Thank you, Peter. In conclusion for me, I'll certainly say that the strategy seven under the infrastructure with the technology, if that can, you know, that 7.1, if that can find its way into some other things, that lends itself as as far as the smart infrastructure. And then the 7.2.1 is the town's technology action plan. Hopefully, that takes into account the comments from today as far as the improvement for a connected community when it comes to Wi-Fi and 5G. And, you know, I can certainly see where, with Mike's suggestions on the healthcare, you know, the the methods and the modes that the town has to support that, whether it be through zoning modifications, or, you know, just the support of the, you know, that workforce housing, you know, the workforce that supports that, and the opportunities for that industry on our island to either expand or make modifications in existing land use. So in closing for me, I, again, I've had quite the pleasure of working with you all. And it's it's been an honor to take the hard work that's been done today with staff and with all the citizens who've had the opportunity to participate and who've taken that step to participate. What I'd like now is, is I'd like to ask for a motion and a second in regards to passing, along with some of the minor comments from today, passing this up to the Comprehensive Planning Committee for the Planning Commission. If I could have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, just just a small point of order. Each of us had two two turns, and except for Mr. Campbell. And could we, I don't know if Mr. Campbell has any other additional comments, but just out of fairness to all the all the participants, you may want to ask him if he has anything else he'd like to add.
Absolutely. Morris, do you have any additional comments in hearing what I had, what I kind of tried to wrap up with some?
No, I think you're okay. The only thing I, it probably was covered, mitigation of disaster mitigation certainly needs to be a part of that futuristic thinking as far as the the plan is concerned. I saw one, one note in here about mitigation, but certainly we need to be proactive in that area to, as far as disaster recovery, etc.
Thank you, Morris. With that, does anybody have any additional comments? If not, I will request a motion.
I move that we move this on to the Comprehensive Planning Committee of the Planning Commission with the noted suggestions from the development team.
Oh, second that.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Christian and a second from Mr. Scanlon. I'm going to ask Eileen again to call the roll. Whenever she asks your name, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and vote for the affirmative yes or no. Eileen?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we do need a little more specifics on what changes might be required. I can say, for example, in your motion, that staff has, like, for example, Ms. Beck's suggestion about a four or six percent table or map of graphic of some sort and defining vacancy, those are things that staff can note and we can take forward. But I'm not sure that something like that needs to be part of the motion. It may be more about the big ideas or things like that. I mean, essentially, I have to put together a memo to give Comp Plan Committee that says that these are the recommendations from the development team. And so it would be helpful to have like, kind of a specific bullets to go with your motion in that regard.
Okay.
Well, Taylor, without having, you know, notes in front of us and each of the individuals, there is a transcript of this. Can we use that information and encapsulate it into that motion as a recommendation? Otherwise, we would need to go through everyone's comments. And obviously, there are some comments that you indicated that would not be included. But many of them, I believe, I'm getting a positive nod from you, we can add to the to the document. Is that a way of handling it?
Sure. I think I think we can summarize that for the Comp Plan Committee. Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. And and Mr. Scanlon is the is the chairman of the Comp Planning Committee. So I believe he has heard everything that's transpired here. And there'll be a set of minutes that goes along. So I think it'd be pretty, pretty easy to to put together exactly what the intent of the development team was in their motion.
Pickleball will be banned in the future, yes.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll back down, Mr. Chairman, and you can you can move forward with your motion as as suggested.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we will have the roll called for yes, no, or abstain.
Ms. Beck?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, another point of order. Would the, and of course, the lawyer would would have a question like this. Would the, would the vote be yes, as as commented? Or, I mean, I don't even want to say as amended or revised, but
It'd be as modified, John.
Yes, I would say you're voting yes in favor of moving along our plan with the comments from the development team today. For the transcript, that would be, that would be the yes vote. No would be not to move it along or abstain.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Antonucci?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Carstens?
Yes. All right, thank you, Eileen. And we're almost to the end of our meeting. But item seven is staff report, and Taylor's going to provide us kind of where this goes from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you again, everyone, for the discussion today and for your very important feedback. I appreciate all of it. And invite you to continue in joining us further with the process of adoption. So this is technically the last meeting of the development team. And you have fulfilled the role that was set forth to you when town council formed this ad hoc committee of Planning Commission. So staff will, however, wait to submit a request for dissolution of the development team until our plan has a first reading with town council. And that is just so that we have you still available if needed. I don't anticipate that, but that's just a formality for that. For our plan, the next meeting will be regarding our plan will be an information session with Planning Commission next week on August 19. And this will be a more detailed discussion about sections three, four, and five to follow up on the information session I did last month. Coming up later this month, we have our Comp Plan Committee meeting to be the follow-up to this one. And that's on the 25. And that will be followed on the 26 with a workshop that Planning Commission is hosting for town council to to discuss our plan. The ultimate goal is for Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and make their recommendation by resolution in September, and for town council to hold their public hearing and readings for adoption by ordinance in October. So we've been on the road since last May of 2019 with our plan, and even further before that with our future getting into this. So we are, we are looking towards October to get this adopted and initiated and move forward for the future of the town. So thank you all again for your work and your dedication and volunteering your time towards this development team. I think it's been a very important part of the process. And you guys have done a wonderful job, and I've enjoyed working with all of you. So thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Well, Taylor, certainly thank you for being our point and and being our our compass in resolving the many things that were thrown at us and in helping us to compile this wonderful document. Again, I want to thank everybody for all of your time, all of your expertise. And it certainly paid off well. And the town and the citizens will will reap the benefit, and we all will reap the benefit, hopefully. So I look forward to seeing everybody around town and out and about. So thanks so much with that.
Judge, thank you for your leadership during this whole process.
Chairman, Judge, good job. Taylor, great job.
It was certainly my pleasure, y'all.
Move adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Bye-bye, everybody.